I call to order the November 27, 2018 meeting of the Oshkosh County Council. Would the city clerk please take the roll call?
Mugerower.
Here.
Prossy.
Here.
Taff.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Omery.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Present seven.
Would you all please stand while council member Mugerower leads us in the invocation and then we'll go into the Pledge of Allegiance.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to sit down? We have a subject here for the chief of community for the class. Stand up. And you can use your outside voice. Two honors. Thomas Weyke. Okay. Would you like to know your age, where you go to school, and holidays a few weeks away? Are you looking forward to the holidays? Who are your presents?
I'm eleven years old. I'm in fifth grade. And I go to Valley Christian School and I'm looking forward to Christmas shopping.
Present please. You're lying. This is Christmas shopping. Another honor.
My name is Anna and I'm in fifth grade. I'm ten years old. I go to Valley Christian and I'm looking forward to the holidays spending time with my family and presents both in clothes.
Go ahead. Mr. Weyke, you can stay and watch, but he can call.
Thank you.
First on the agenda is a presentation by the Transit Development Plan by East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. Mr. Collins, would you like to do some introductions?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So Go Transit hired East Central Wisconsin Regional Plan Commission to work on our Transit Development Plan. So Nick Musson from East Central has been our main planner in contact. So he's here to present that plan. And then what we are looking for is after he presents tonight, we'll bring this back to council in two weeks and ask for adoption of the plan. The Transit Advisory Board last week recommends approval of the plan.
Turn over to Nick.
All right. Well, thank you for having me. Again, my name is Nicholas Musson. I'm an Associate Transportation Planner with East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. I'm happy to be here today to give you an overview of the Transit Development Plan. So for those of you that are not familiar, a Transit Development Plan is a short-term, short-range planning document, usually out to one to five years, which assists the planning efforts for the transit agencies into the future. One of the things that we like to do that's a little bit different is we like to plan out one to ten years. So we like to take a little bit of a long-range look to try to take into account some of those long-range goals. The document is an update to the City of Oshkosh Go Transit 2011 Transit Development Plan. The effort is funded through the Federal Transit Administration Section 5304 Statewide Transportation Planning Program Grant. Both East Central and the City Go Transit applied to the state for this particular To guide the planning document, we put together a steering committee, which consists of a broad range of public, private, and nonprofit entities. Something that was very important to us throughout this process was that we held the steering committee meetings in different locations throughout the community. We asked steering committee members for volunteers or for each one of them to host one of the steering committee meetings. And really, the point of that is that we really wanted to get all the steering committee members accustomed or exposed to all the different locations that Go Transit touches throughout their fixed route system. And we asked each steering committee member that hosted to give a little testimony, talk about how their agency utilizes Go Transit and how their clientele utilizes Go Transit. So the whole goal is to really educate the steering committee throughout the process. We developed a vision and a mission. So our vision is to provide transportation options to better connect everybody throughout the community. Our mission is to provide convenient, affordable, and accessible public transportation options to support our community's ever-changing mobility needs. So one very important part of this planning effort was our public outreach. We really worked hard to try to connect to as many people as we could throughout the process. Overall, we collected nearly 500 comments from the public through a variety of forums. We used the City of Oshkosh's polling system, the Pollco system, to administer survey questions. We distributed surveys through paper and online. Online, we used Survey Monkey. On the bus, we used voting boxes where individual riders could fill out a survey and submit them in the survey boxes. We attended community events. We like to go to where the people are, so that was very important to us, to attend the Oshkosh Senior Expo and Oshkosh Farmers Market, where we collected a lot of public input. We distributed 300 surveys in mailboxes at the Oshkosh Winnebago County Housing Authority Properties Court Tower, Marion Manor, and Ralph Place. Distributed 100 surveys sent to Oshkosh Senior Center. And then through the media, we had several articles through the Oshkosh Herald talking about the process and the recommendations through this planning process. We utilized social media as well. We used Facebook. We used East Central's Facebook page. We used Winnebago County Health's Facebook page. And we used Go Transit's Facebook page to get out these recommendations and to get feedback as part of the survey. We connected to over 2,800 individuals through the Facebook and directed them to the surveys. So overall, we really tried to get connected to the public through a number of different avenues, through paper, through electronic, through face-to-face. So some of the main questions that we asked these individuals are these next three questions. And really, these are some of the most important questions because these are going to directly relate to the recommendations later on in the presentation. So if the first question, and I should note that this is out of 209 respondents that took part in this particular effort, but we wanted to get an idea of what individuals thought of a fare increase. So we were looking at increasing the dollar adult fare to $1.50, increasing the monthly pass from $25 to $35, and increasing the three-month pass from $60 to $90. So that's really what we wanted to get an idea from the public. And it was, we got about 60% of the respondents that said it was about right, 37% said it was too much, and 2% said it was too little. Another question that we were really interested in getting some feedback on was the three-month pass purchase policy. And we wanted to get people's opinion on purchasing the three-month either by quarterly or by bulk. And as you can see, the results are pretty even across the board, do not change by quarterly or by in bulk. But I wanted to give you a little bit of background information on why we were asking this particular question. So currently, with the three-month passes, on any given month, there is a one-month pass and three three-month passes that are valid. So that means that when a driver is trying to determine whether or not a rider has a valid pass, they have to know all four different valid passes. And you can see that there's four different passes, four different colors, because there's three different passes for their three-month passes and one pass for their one-month pass. So the reason why we wanted to dive into this is that we were looking for ways to simplify this process so that the driver isn't looking at four different passes. We really wanted to get it down to one pass that they're trying to look at and memorize. And going back to that, the survey results, you can see that about 35% said leave it as is, and about 34% said they favored the three-month option, and about 31% said they favored the buying-in-bulk option. So another question that we wanted some input on was the transfer policy. Currently, the transfer policy allows for 60 minutes, so only a rider could utilize their transfers many times as they can within that 60-minute window. So we were really curious to get people's opinion on what they thought about just limiting that to one transfer, or reducing that 60-minute to 45 minutes, or taking away the transfers altogether and just requiring the rider to purchase a ticket every time they get on a bus. It was pretty clear that 74% said they prefer the 60-minute window, 15% preferred one transfer, 6% preferred limited transfers for their 45-minute window, and 4% said no transfer at all. Another area that we looked at as part of this process is Route 9. Route 9 is an underperforming route. In 2016, Route 9 had a total of 33,929 riders compared to the highest-performing route, which had a total of 158,528 riders. So we really wanted to focus in on Route 9 and see if we can come up with some recommendations for improving that route. Route 9 operates west of Interstate 41 connecting riders to Walmart, residential neighborhood, outlet mall, southwest industrial park, YMCA, Mercy Medical Center, and Traeger Elementary School. And as you can tell, there's a lot of different land uses going on that covers that particular route. So what we did is that we had some funding set aside, and we contracted with SRF Consulting to bring in some transit experts to help us evaluate this route, redesign it, and come up with some options for moving forward. So this all kind of brings us to the recommendations. And the recommendations were developed from input from the steering committee, the public, and from Go Transit's advisory board. So the recommendation when it comes to the fare increase is to increase the fare from $1 to $1.50, this would be the adult cash fare, increase the monthly pass from $25 to $35, and then to eliminate the current three-month pass purchasing policy and replace it with the monthly pass buying-in-bulk option. So if an individual purchases three consecutive monthly passes, they would get a $15 discount, which is what is recommended, which is the recommended increase. And that would eliminate the confusion for the bus drivers and would make it so that there is only one valid pass for every single month. So I think this is important to note, at least the steering committee thought this was important, to talk a little bit about why the fare increase is needed. And this is what we put down. The community values Go Transit services, and in order to maintain the existing level of service, additional funding is needed. The continued decline in federal and state funding is putting pressure on the city and Go Transit to maintain current services with limited funding. A fare increase is recommended to keep existing services resident value, such as Saturday service, and to provide Go Transit with the ability to plan for future capital improvements, such as buses, shelters, and new technology. So the, as far as SRF, they came back to us and they provided us with a number of alternatives. They provided us with some no-cost alternatives, and they provided us some cost alternatives if additional funding is identified in the future. What the plan is recommending is to eliminate Route 9 YMCA pattern and the operating, the existing Route 9 outlet pattern at the sole pattern once every 30 minutes. So basically, right now, Route 9 operates every hour, and it goes out to Traeger and to YMCA. There isn't a lot of ridership. So what they proposed was eliminating that particular connection, increasing the route frequency from an hour to 30 minutes. Now, to still accommodate for Traeger Elementary School and the YMCA, what Route 9 is going to do is, in the morning during the school hours, they're going to have one trip that goes out there to take the students to Traeger Elementary, and then in the PM, when the students are done with school, to go out there and take the students back. So that's how they plan on addressing the elementary school. For anybody that still wants to take advantage of the YMCA, they can get on the bus and ask for a deviation to the YMCA, and then the bus will deviate from the route and take that individual to the YMCA. When the individual is ready to get a return trip, they just have to call in and ask for a return trip, and the bus will go out and deviate and pick those individuals up. So the real win in this particular scenario is that it really increases the frequency, so increases it from an hour to 30 minutes. And the idea is that with increased frequency, it will be more attractive to those individuals at the southwest business park, and hopefully, more of those individuals will take advantage of that. Now, another trade-off with this particular option is that it no longer is going to go on to West 20th, which is going to eliminate two stops on West 20th, which were stops that have some lower ridership. So those are the trade-offs when it comes to the recommendation for Route 9. So additional recommendations. Proposed increase in technology upgrades, automatic stop announcement systems, new radio communications, real-time bus location app software, text messaging system to alert the riders, and electronic fare collections. And then also, another area that we propose some recommendation is developing a marketing plan, doing some transit advertising, adopt a bus shelter program, ongoing surveys for riders, potential full-time marketing position, internship opportunities with area universities and schools. Business engagement, sense of community, and ambassador program to help connect to the greater community as well. One of the things that we felt very strongly and wanted to include in the plan was develop a future downtown Transit Center site plan. We started, we have a couple pages in the plan that talk about the importance of planning for the future and really starting to plan for a future site plan. One of the things that we recommend is applying for future grant funding. Do some future site planning, create a study with that, future grant funding, with some design alternatives. And really, we got the idea from the City of Eau Claire, who put together a site plan. And because they had a site plan put together and they're ready to go when some grant funding came available, they were able to apply for it and receive some grant funding to be able to build their future site plan. And because they had the plan in place and they were all ready to go, they were able to obtain those funding sources. So additional policy recommendations, looking at regional transit authority, enabling legislation, ongoing collaboration with Appleton Valley Transit, who is also going through updating their Transit Development Plan right now as well. And then ongoing collaboration with the Oshkosh Area School District. We all know that there's been a lot of discussion about providing citywide busing for all of the students. So continuing that discussion is going to be important moving forward. I know that was a quick and brief overview of the study. There's a lot in the plan, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Just one question, council.
The fare increase, when would you anticipate, so does council act on that? So it goes into effect January 1? Is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. And how would you overall notify, use our, probably our typical system of put it on the website, put it on the, maybe even have bus fares on the buses?
Yep. Actually, we've already started that. We had a public hearing at our Transit Advisory Board meeting last week, but prior to that, we've already, we published a notice twice in Northwestern. We've put notices on, they've been on all the buses and all the paratransit vehicles for the last, well, it's probably been about three, four weeks now. And then also posted Downtown Transit Center on our Facebook page and then in our office. So we've already received, you know, a couple of questions, but the word is definitely out there.
And then just one other one, Mayor. On Route 9, have you notified the affected locations that the bus may no longer be going there?
We haven't officially done that yet because we're waiting till we got through the plan approval process. But really, the only negative effect I can see right now, because like Nick mentioned, we're planning on getting the kids to Traeger in the morning, and actually, we're going to go there twice in the morning because some kids go there for the breakfast program. So those two trips we'll plan automatically, and then the same thing after school. The 20th Avenue Y, we have enough time in that route, so if somebody wants to go there, they just need to ask the driver and we'll drop them off there. So the only two trade-offs are, if they're there, they'll have to call and then request a pickup, which we'll then pick them up on the next trip, number one. And then, like Nick mentioned, there's two stops on 20th. One of them has no ridership, so that's, I mean, we're not going to lose anything there. The other one has a little bit of ridership, however, there is, they have an option of two stops, one's on Allerton and Washburn, and one's at Oakwood and 20th, that are within probably a quarter mile each. So they'll still have an option, they'll just have to walk maybe a few hundred feet further.
I think the plan was very well done. Thank you.
Another question. Just one question. You mentioned the Oshkosh Area School District. How do Lourdes and Valley Christian come into play with this whole route schedule?
Well, right now, we do, Lourdes, we do have, they're actually really, they're served pretty well. We have stops on both Whitsal and then also on Eagle. So they're, or not Eagle, that would be.
Sawyer.
So they're very well, they're very well served. We don't really get much ridership from Lourdes, but they do have an option. I think there's one or two students I've seen use the bus on occasion. Valley Christian's a little bit outside of our service area. That's in the, technically, it's really close to the town of Oshkosh out there, but that, we don't go down Snow Road, that would be a little bit further, a whole walk if they wanted to use that.
Okay, thank you. I have just one question.
So this actually would be a question for Mr. Davis. So as Mr. Musson was talking about the switch or the shift over to favor more that southwest industrial park, to double that frequency, and also for the outlet shops, he was saying hopefully, we would have more ridership by increasing that frequency. Do you know, have there been any discussions with any of the employers down there that would have, you know, numbers of first shift people that would maybe support that or would utilize that? Or, I mean, are we just kind of saying if we change this, they will come?
I don't know anything specific to those businesses in general. We've heard from employers specifically through Greater Oshkosh EDC that they'd like to see more bus service because it is a challenge for them to get employees out to the, for their shifts. And I believe Greater Oshkosh EDC is also working on a commute-to-work program, which it's an experimental thing as well. So yes, we're trying to make more mobility choices available to the employees for all of our industrial parks. So I'd have to report back to you on the specifics of Southwest. I don't know those off the top of my head.
And as you were referring to the commute-to-work program, is that related to the access to jobs, Mr. Collins, that we were talking about at Transit Advisory Board?
Sure. It is somewhat. Well, first to answer your first question, I did hear from Silver Star Brands, and I talked to them because they were concerned if they were going to get less frequent service. So they're happy that they would get more frequent service because there are a number of employees that do use it. That's the one employer I heard from.
The warehouse.
Yes. But actually, Nick can answer your question because he's pretty involved with that commute-to-work program.
Sorry, Nick. I didn't mean to slight you.
No, I'm happy to answer that question. Currently, right now, there's a pilot project called Phoenix Mobility Rising, and that really is to bring in technology to help get a handle on all the different assets out there, all the different services, and then use volunteer drivers to fill the gaps, to help these individuals get to work, back and forth to work. And as part of that, Go EDC applied for Commute to Careers grant, and they actually received $30,000 in subsidies that we're going to use towards paying for the mileage for these particular trips. And we've already actually started transporting some individuals, actually, we're working kind of to test the program out with two refugees, to take them to Silver Brands. Actually, they take the bus to Silver Brands, and because their shift ends at 8:00 at night, we give them a ride home so they can maintain their work schedule and hopefully, you know, graduate to something bigger and better. So, you know, we are working on trying to come up with.
So this is one way that Oshkosh is actually trying to kind of deal with some of that maybe spatial mismatches, kind of filling in some of those gaps.
Yeah. The idea is that if we can increase that frequency, it becomes more appealing, provides more options, like, for example, those two refugees would have, you know, it would be easier time to get access to Silver Brands. And then the other project, that pilot project that I mentioned, is all about filling those gaps, so those periods outside of the operational hours of Go Transit and outside of their coverage area.
And just one last thing, and this is for Mr. Collins. So when we were talking about it at Transit, some of the Transit Advisory Board members asked, you know, if we did not, and this relates to the increase in fares, if we did not increase the fares, what would we lose in that process? And I believe the reference was access to jobs that.
Yeah. Excuse me. Yeah, that, I mean, we then have to make difficult decisions, which obviously, you know, if we don't have the funding necessary, then we only have really one option, which is to cut service. And to do that, I mean, we'd probably start with either Saturday service or our access-to-jobs program's mostly funded locally. And basically, like council all knows from our budget meetings, our federal and state funding is, goes down about a half percent a year, which puts more pressure on the local levy. So really, we have, you know, we have four funding services. We have the federal government, the state government, the city government, and fares. And fares are only about 22% of that equation. But, you know, every little bit helps, and we do have the lowest fares in the state. Even with this little bit of an increase, we'll still have the second-lowest fares in the state. Stevens Point is the only one that's lower. So it's still a relatively good bargain for citizens, and we can maintain the current level of service.
Thank you.
Mugerower, I believe you have a question?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have two questions. One regarding the transfer policy. Just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. I don't see any recommendations as to changes in that. Is it your recommendation going forward that we leave it as is for now?
Yeah, that is the recommendation, to leave it as is.
Perfect, good. Second part was, you mentioned it at the end of your presentation. We had a joint meeting with council and school district in May or June, I believe, and that was one of our topics of discussion that evening was the transit policy and any coordination that we can provide with, between the school district and us for the students in this community. And you know, you've had discussions on increasing the amount of subsidized bus passes for the students. Specifically, or I guess specifically, where's that conversation gone since we met and had a joint meeting in May, June to today?
Yeah. Right now, it evolves kind of in the school district's court. We're kind, we're waiting to see what they want to do. I've heard through, that question was asked at our Transit Advisory Board meeting, and one of the board members has heard that the school district is working on some possible funders for that, to provide either more passes or to provide some type of an agreement. We haven't heard back from them on that yet. He said he didn't think it was really official yet, but he knows that there's ongoing conversations. So really, I mean, from our standpoint, like, we always are, we're willing to work with them. We just somehow have to fill that gap of the revenue that we would lose if we went forward to the school district with students riding for free. So we would have to come to some type of revenue agreement, which, last I had talked to their business manager, and that was before they had the transition of the superintendents, they were going to talk with their school board and then let me know when they needed some. some further. So, as far as I know, that's, that's where that's at yet. We did have, on our steering committee, one of the members, Esther, was actively involved in our, in our steering committee, and so they're, you know, like, like Nick said, the recommendations, they continue to try to find some type of solution, although those conversations are still ongoing, and we're waiting to hear what they, what they'd like to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there are no further questions. Thank you, Nick, Mr. Collins.
Thank you for having me.
Next, we move to citizen statements to council. Pam, I'll read if we have someone who is. Statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the City of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electionary. Your turn.
Lois Yankee, 480 Northwest Haven Drive. Certainly, Jen can go first. Jen Steinheilber, 340 Northwest Haven Drive.
Ma'am, right over to this.
My name is Jen Steinheilber, and I live at 340 Northwest Haven Drive. The last time I was before the council, I and my neighbor brought a petition from our neighbors on West Haven, asking for parking to be restored on the east side of Northwest Haven between Whitsell and Highway 21. We received notification of a meeting of the Traffic and Parking Advisory Board for November 13th at City Hall. I went around the neighborhood to remind people to attend this meeting so their concerns could be heard. We had a good turnout, and everyone got their chance to speak. A proposal to allow parking from Noel Court to Spring Mill on the east side of West Haven was made and agreed to by the board. Much to my surprise, reading an article in The Herald, that this proposal was turned down by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. The article also said that no one showed up for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Well, guess what? No one showed up because no one knew about the meeting. I have lived in Oshkosh all my life, and will admit, I did not know the city has all these boards and committees. Unless you call City Hall and ask, you don't know when these boards meet and where. And when I did call City Hall, I was told sometimes the boards don't meet if there isn't an, an agenda. And there is another board called the Sustainability Advisory Board and Plan Commission that also meets regarding proposals. So, if I have to jump over hurdles and attend different board meetings, so be it. I will call and find out when they meet and be there. We were also told at, at the Traffic Review Board, that the city plans on putting in bike lanes all over the city to connect them, so people that do not have cars can bike to doctor appointments, grocery stores, et cetera. What kind of budget do the bike lanes have? We again ask for parking to be returned to our street between Noel Court and Spring Mill. Thank you. Any questions?
Just regarding meeting notices and agendas, those are posted on the city's website. And under meeting notices, correct, Pam?
Correct.
And how do you get on the agenda? I mean, does anybody just show up and, when you find out when the meeting is, you can go there and just talk, like you can here?
As, as any meeting has a public comment, period, yes.
Okay, good.
And just as a matter of information, the Sustainability Board will be taking this up at their January 7th meeting.
And where are the EpiHill?
They meet at six o'clock.
City Hall?
At City Hall, yeah.
Okay. January?
January 7th.
Seven, okay, thank you.
The one reason, reason meetings are canceled, we may be short quorum.
Well, I've got this number of somebody at City Hall that I can call and say, oh, have you, okay.
Okay, Lois Yankee, 480 Northwest Haven Drive.
Hi, thanks and for listening to us tonight. We do have concerns, and we hope you understand where we're coming from, from this, and hope that as this goes forward to these other committees, that you will consider the concerns that we have for no parking on our street on Northwest Haven Drive. And we did go to the Traffic Review Committee where Mr. Collins was at that meeting, and they did make a motion for that, 'cause it is a really busy street. The bikers still use the sidewalks. Anybody in their right mind wouldn't wanna ride a bike on that street. It's just crazy. This September, we had a bad accident on our street, came through, a car came through, speeding, hit our mailbox, took it off at the ground, went to our neighbors, took off the hydrant and the light pole, and continued down to Patriot Drive. I mean, it's crazy out there. And we're all elderly, it's all condos on that street and a few homes, and we have no parking. I mean, we're all elderly, and we either have to cross the street and park on Haven Ward or something like that, but it's just not easy for us to have guests at our home because of the parking situation. So, I hope that you'll consider this, if this comes, when this comes to the council, that you will consider restoring parking on the east side of Northwest Haven from Noel to Spring Mill, Spring Mill Drive, if we could at least restore the parking on that side of the street. We, kind of like down at St. Rayfield, so they put a parking lane in there on the east side, they can park there. So, we'd like to have that in our section too as well. So, thank you for your consideration.
Questions?
Ms. Yankee? Yes, hi. So, when you say you have no parking, it's, maybe I'm looking at the wrong condos, but are those the same condos that have the two-car garage with space for four other vehicles in the double drive?
They have two-car garages, and I don't know what their car space is, but we have space in, at, we have a home, we're not in a condo. And we only have parking for two on us. We'd be hanging out into the sidewalk and if we, we couldn't do four in our driveway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moebrer?
Nope, just thank you, Pam.
Pam?
No one has registered.
Before we move on to consent agenda, I am surprised you didn't explain why we're meeting in the Public Safety Building and not City Hall as, as usual. For those who have visited safety, City Hall recently, they've discovered that the elevator is very slow. So, we're having the elevator repaired, and we'll be meeting here until early January. So, if you are gonna come to a council meeting or a board and commission meeting, do check the city's web, city's website to find out where we will be meeting, but most meetings will be in the Public Safety Building. Next, we have consent agenda, items which are, items of routine administrative, administrative nature, that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote, STACK recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request and it be removed, the consent agenda for discussion. Pam?
I have no one registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Mr. Moebrer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a comment regarding 18-568. The reason that we're, that the mayor put forth a new name to join the plant commission is that Mr. David Borsek, I shouldn't say resigned, has retired from that board after nearly thirty, we'll say thirty-three to thirty-five years, depending on where the information's coming from, from serving on that board for, for well over three decades. And just wanna say thank you for his service to the community, and we're better off for, for him having served so long on that particular commission.
Thank you. I, there's one for monitor. I see no one else wishing to speak. Would you please take the roll?
Moebrer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have items remove the consent agenda, which there are none, or were none, so we go, go on the pending ordinance. It's ordinance 18-570, amend parking lot names, parking regulations, and maps. Pam, anyone register?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Moebrer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Aye.
Herman? Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
We have one new ordinance, and there'll be no formal action taken on at this, at this meeting, and it's ordinance 18-571. Approve parking regulation changes on Sunny View Road, which is County Road Y, and on West Lincoln Avenue. We have some new resolutions. The first is Resolution 18-572. Approve 2019 across-the-board merit increase for nonrepresented employees. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll.
Moebrer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Aye.
Herman? Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is Resolution 18-573. Approve charities for extra, extra ordinary services for special events 2019. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second. So moved. Second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a.
Go ahead.
I guess it's really more of a comment before I maybe suggest something. I do still feel that we, we pass on too much of the cost for special events for, whether it's the equipment and vehicles, whether it's the personnel costs. I know a significant amount of time was spent in 2018 and 2017 to try to put a plan in place, but I still believe that we're passing on too much of the cost to the event organizers and taking away funds from necessary charities and goodwill organizations. In 2018, up to date, we've billed for just over $10,000 in vehicle equipment costs, that's 25% of the FEMA rates that, that we suggest charging, so that means in, in three years, we'll be charging $40,000 for the vehicle and the equipment costs. And that's the path around, and that's too much for me. That's too much for several of the organizers as well. So, I would like to make a motion, if, if there's no other comments regarding this one, I'm gonna move that we, let me get the right language here, that instead of billing for 50% of the hourly FEMA equipment rates in 2019, that we hold the 25% rate for 2019, extending this one year to continue to allow event organizers to, to plan accordingly, and, and maybe, maybe we take this discussion up again in 2019.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second? I hear no second, therefore, the motion dies for lack of a second.
Mayor?
Mr. Discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just, to, to what Mr. Moebrer says, it is a concern, and I know it's a concern at Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, which I serve on as a council liaison, but I think, you know, we've had this discussion, we've had great discussion on it, and I've heard from several of my constituents throughout the community, that they like special events, but they don't like special events because it interrupts a lot of their day-to-day activities. We are the event city, so that being said, I support all our events, I think they're a great asset to the community, but there's a cost to doing business, and that's where this all comes into. You know, it costs to have a police officer there, it costs to have a firefighter there, paramedics there, the equipment there. There is a cost for that squad car, whether it's running, sitting, idling, there's still a cost because it needs to be there. And I don't think all the taxpayers of Oshkosh would wanna pay for that. And we're, we're in total kind contribution for the, for all special events is almost $75,000 that we're giving back in kind contributions. I think that's a fair amount. And I think when a promoter comes in and puts on a special event, whether it's a fundraiser or it's a special event at the Expo Center, or the, the arena, or even the Howard, if there are circumstances that require city services over and above, I think unfortunately, the event promoter's gonna have to pay for that. So, I think the FEMA rate is, is a good tool, and it's one that I think a lot of communities have, have used in the past, and there may come a time where this council or future councils will say enough's enough and put, put a limit on it, but I, I think we're not quite there yet, so I'll, I'll support the resolution as proposed.
Councilman Peck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm, of the seven members on this dais, I'm in a rather unique position, in that I think, I believe, I am the only person on this council who actually organizes one of these special events. And while, yes, it is an additional cost that has to be covered, we have gone, we have to just go and pound the pavement a little bit more, we understand that it is a cost of our doing business for this particular event, that the city provides us services. They provide us the ability to have a safe event. While, yes, it's difficult to, you know, we need to go and work a little harder, raise a little bit of money, a little more money, or maybe we don't raise as much as we would like to, there are also so many other factors that come into these special events that, you know, we have weather, you have all of the other things. So, while it is, yes, we are raising the cost, we, we are doing is just passing along the costs of doing business to have these events in our community so that they're safe, they're helpful, and that, that they can indeed be done and raise the funds that they need. So, while, like I say, it's, it's tough, it's, we have to go and work a little harder, knock on a few more doors, get creative in, in some of our other, what we do with it is, but I support this because it is simply, we have to understand that we can't have the taxpayers subsidizing some of these events.
Deputy Mayor Paul Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Snow, can I just ask you, just a clarifying point? So, in your memo where we're talking about the number of events that utilized city services in 2018, that number was 238 events, right?
Correct.
But then you go on to talk about how of those 238, 118 of the events, even though they use city services, may not necessarily have, have met the qualifications for a special event. So, is that, is that on trend from what we saw two years ago? Is that decreasing, increasing? Do you have a sense for that?
It's a little difficult because we just started tracking those non-events. There's still being, many of those are still contracting services with police and fire for the event. However, we didn't track them along with our special events in previous years, so it's really hard for me to determine where we were at.
Sure.
One to two years ago with the, the events that didn't require a permit.
Okay, and would you say, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but would you say most of the time, the reason why they might not necessarily meet that definition is, is it 250 or the minimum number of attendees, or is that not the case in most situations?
I would say most of the time, they're just requiring one service, so they may just be requiring a security detail for a company.
Okay.
So, they, they do those things.
So, just limited in scope of what they need?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Snow, if you could, if you could stay there. I know, and I thank you for reaching out to us, related to our event, with, and I know you do it with other events, is, is that one of the things you do is you reach out to them with suggestions to possibly change routes, to change their, how they, how they organize things, that would provide the event organizers with cost savings, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I just have one comment, and I'm, if I've got my state statutes correct. We cannot structure fees, be it a rental inspection program or special events, as a profit center, as I refer to. We have to cover our costs, and that is it, correct?
That'd be correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, would you please take the roll?
Moebrer?
Nope.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 61.
Next is Resolution 18-574. Approve professional service agreement with AECom for design, engineering permitting, and construction documentation. Lakeshore Riverwalk, $176,845. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second. So moved. Second. Discussion. Discussion? Would you please take a roll?
Muhrow?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
Next is resolution eighteen-bot-five-seven-five, approve conditional use permit for a multi-family use at nine thirteen and nine fifteen South Main Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Deputy Mayor Palmary?
Yes, either Mr. Verch or Mr. Davis. Is this, if I understand this correctly, this is the formerly known Miles Kimball lot? No. I'm on the outside of the street.
No, you're on the west side of the street.
Help me with the geography here, sorry. This sounds like a pretty exciting project. Could you just kind of give a brief, this is kind of one of the first residential, multifamily residential that we've seen in relation to...
It's south of Ninth Street.
Correct. It's one of, it's, this building is located, this is, this is a building, or two sets of buildings located in the middle of a block just south of Ninth Avenue on the west side. It's a building that's been sitting relatively vacant for a number of years. So what the developers proposing really is a, to definitely reuse this building to create residential housing. I think there's three floors of housing in there. The first floor would be live-work, would be designed as live-work units. You saw their conditions in there and the discussion. And the rest would be regular, regular living units, a partnership.
These are the first live-work themed, I guess, residences, correct?
Correct.
It's really exciting. Thank you.
We're excited as well.
Quick comment. I'm just letting both the Plan Commission and the Landowners Commission, and the developers come to both bodies. And the Landowners Commission, which is a little more picky, I guess, than Plan about architectural detail, but very excited about the concept, what's going to happen to the building. The developers here, and as I recall, the facades will remain as is. You're going to do some work on retaining the big windows, and the one garage door is going to be going away. So it's a very exciting project to see, not only happening in Oshkosh, but in the Saldas District. So it's pretty cool. If there's no further discussion, would you please take a roll?
Muhrow?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
Next, we have council discussion, direction the city manage and future agenda items. First is a future workshop, workshop for performance measurement team workshop, December eleventh at five PM in the, in these chambers, the safety, the public, the Safety Building in room SB one.
That'll be right here.
Right here.
And in the interest of just facilitating the meeting, the setup would be exactly as you see here. So we don't have to, because we have a traffic advisory committee meeting that same day here at four o'clock. So we'll need to be doing some quick turnover of tables, kind of like a fast food restaurant, but we'll have to get it done quickly. So we figured the setup here would be acceptable to everybody. And staff will be prepared. Chief Smith is head of the committee, but we'll have other committee members there that will be able to discuss that. And you will get a presentation and report from them in advance of the workshop.
Next is the City Hall and Parks Facility Workshop on January sixteenth, twenty-nineteen at five-thirty. Location would be back in City Hall.
Yes. That's our plan.
I have seen some of the plans. I'm pretty excited. This is the second time for citizens to address the council. Did anyone?
No one is registered.
I added to council member announcements and statements in the event that's beginning, Chief Stanley, is it tomorrow night or?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, the Fire Department will be handling, starting their annual toy and food drive. This is the twentieth year that you've done this. There should be the dates and the locations on the screen, or at least that you can view at home. But it starts tomorrow night, and the last evening is November, or December eleventh. Do you want to fill in the other dates for those of us here?
I'm not sure I can do that off the top of my head.
Okay.
I am. Yeah, I have the email from...
Tomorrow is starting at five?
Five fifteen.
Five fifteen at Station fifteen?
Station fourteen.
Station fourteen.
Off of the airport.
Oh, right. Okay.
And I'll be joining you guys on Thursday at CP, so that's... And hopefully the weather will be better than it has been the last couple of years. It was pretty bitter, bitter the last two years.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
As the chief said, tomorrow it's at Station fourteen, which is by the airport, then November twenty-ninth, Station fifteen. You'll be leaving from December third at Station sixteen, December tenth at Station seventeen slash nineteen, and December eleventh at Station eighteen. And the meeting times will be five fifteen for all the dates above.
Thank you. It's a very exciting event, you guys. You've just fabulous joined in your half for twenty years. So it's great.
Mayor, I have one more under council. I've been asked by Parks Director Mauer to read an email inviting all the citizens, peace, love, and joy. The Oshkosh Senior Center presents the Golden Tones Holiday Concert on Saturday, December eighth at two PM. The free concert will be held in the north building located at two-thirty-four Campbell Road, which is celebrating fifty years, I believe. Isn't that correct? Yes. Okay. The forty-member volunteer choir performs many different organizations, and highlight of the year is the annual holiday concert. Former news anchor Jerry Burke will be master of ceremonies. The music will most certainly put you in the mood for the upcoming holidays. The Golden Tones Choir Director is Paul Steiner, and he should be accompanied by Marshall Potter. The public is invited to enjoy the concert. Light refreshments will be served after the program. Let's ring in the holidays with the sounds of the season. This email came from Man Schaefer, who's the marketing and fund development coordinator for Parks, Senior Center, and planning. So everybody come on over to the Senior Center Saturday, December eighth at two PM. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments on city events that are coming up during the holidays? All right, if not, I'll turn this portion over to City Manager Rollo for his announcements and statements.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. There are a variety of memos in your agenda packet. After the council approved the budget at the last meeting, all of our CIPs now are kicking into gear. So you'll see a variety of professional services agreements that are under the threshold for council approval, but mandate my reporting them to you. They range from wetland determination, site plan review, stormwater review, our landfill, quarry operation review, other stormwater management, structural engineering, anything associated with our capital improvement program. Those are all things that will be done beginning now throughout the course of the winter and leading into next year's capital improvement season. Happy to answer any questions if you have any questions on those.
If you don't mind, can I make one comment on that?
Yeah, please.
I do just want to say thank you to City Manager Rollo and staff. It doesn't go unnoticed that we're seeing quite a few new names or different names for some of these professional service agreements after some of the discussions we've had over the last year or so. That, just wanted to say thank you for that. It doesn't go unnoticed that you're, you're trying to see if there are other companies out there that can provide those services for us.
Thank you. Appreciate the feedback. Oshkosh Corporation update is in your agenda packet. As we know, we're here at the different building. Things seem to be going on schedule, but ask me after the next meeting how we're doing, and we'll have a better idea of how well the elevator project's proceeding, but no indications right now that there, there are any issues. And I'm going to double-check with Jake and see if we have the Welcome to Oshkosh video that we can show for our studio. It looks like, is Jake trying to get that going for... I think Jake's trying to get it done there for our, for our audiences at home.
I thought I could hide it back there at one meeting, but I'm going to have to do it some...
All right, thank you, Jake. And this is a continuing series. We'll be having one at this meeting and then one more. So this is Public Safety tonight. Thank you. Sorry, Jake.
Public Safety is an expectation in any community, and it is one of the most important priorities to the city of Oshkosh. The Oshkosh Police Department and Oshkosh Fire Department are award-winning public safety agencies and have earned state and nationally recognized accreditations and recognitions. The departments have built strong relationships with the Oshkosh community, giving citizens trust and confidence in their protection. The Oshkosh Police Department's mantra, "Know us before you meet us," rings true as community and neighborhood policing have put officers on a first-name basis with residents, building recognition and trust within the community. The Oshkosh Fire Department responds to many emergencies and prioritizes prevention of fires and accidents. Oshkosh takes part in the annual national night-out event all across the city's neighborhoods, celebrating the connection that police and fire departments have with its residents. With cutting-edge technology and a community-first approach, the city's public safety agencies help ensure that residents and visitors can enjoy each day in Oshkosh.
Nice voiceover, huh? Yeah. Thank you, Jake. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, can you just leave one comment? I just want to compliment the Fire Department for a job they did very well on Saturday night. There's a pretty nasty fire from what I understand. And fortunately, only one building was totally affected by it, correct, Chief?
Yes, sir.
There are a couple other buildings that may have had some smoke damage or others, but no structural damage, correct?
No.
So it's a great job. If you have anything you want to say about how many departments' units were there, or how many firefighters were involved, nobody got hurt, I dig it, other than the two citizens that we heard about?
Yeah, the, the two citizens that were evacuated from the fire, rescued from the fire, both are doing well. That, we anticipate them being discharged from the hospital this week, and anticipate full recovery from them. You know, kudos to the Oshkosh Police Department that assisted in those rescues and early evacuation of that building. We did have a majority of our on-duty crews and stations respond to that fire. Also got mutual aid assistance from a number of our surrounding departments, either at that scene or backfilling into the city. So we certainly appreciate them as well. Appreciate the recognition.
He took care of it? I was just going to say, I thought I heard the police was involved with that, too.
Yes, they were.
Just, was that one building or was that two buildings that sort of over time became one and just kind of, that's a historian, I'm wondering.
It was just one building. There was like a little connecting breezeway to the adjoining building, but they are standalone, so no damage to the neighboring building. And then the other side is a parking lot, so no structures threatened there.
Just a quick question. Do we know, were there working smoke detectors in there? Were they part of the equation in that early evacuation?
That we've, are wrapping up the investigation. We're doing our after-action review right now. So we pulled the records on what type of fire protection systems they have. And we also want to do some more interviewing of the victims of the fire. But the primary one we need to talk to has been on a ventilator, so he can converse with us for, early on in the week. So we're hoping to do some follow-up interviewing with him to find out about his detection systems. My initial, I mean, just a supposition would be probably not because of the, how advanced the fire got. So it doesn't sound like they were notified, or if they were, if there was a working smoke alarm in there, it didn't alert that occupant. But we can do some, as we continue the follow-up of the investigation, I can follow back up with you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. If council has no further...
Motion?
I know, I was going to give them a chance to say it one more time. Deputy Mayor Palmary would like to make a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that following the adjournment of this meeting, the council may convene into closed session pursuant to section nineteen-point-eight-five-one-C of Wisconsin State Statute to discuss the performance evaluation and compensation regarding the city manager and employee over which the common council has jurisdiction and exercises responsibility.
Give me a second.
Second.
Please take a roll.
Muhrow?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
Now, second and adjourning. I did, I moved you second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.